We've got Cal joining us remote. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January 9, 2024 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we're conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting both in person and virtually. We are glad that you've decided to join us tonight for this meeting. During public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand virtually, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You will then be able to make comment. We will start with members of the public who are here with us in council chambers first, and then those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a public participation session. We do ask that participants keep their comments two, three minutes or less. With that, we will now begin tonight's meeting with Pledge Allegiance and moment of silence. Mr. Crack, if we could have roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Carmenito.
President.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirkner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Strunfeld.
Here.
Mr. Weiss.
President.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Mayor is here, Assistant's remote, Chief is here, Solicitor's here. You have a call. Very good. We don't have any presentations on tonight's agenda, so we will open up the first round of public participation. Any members joining us here in the council chambers, if you want to make your way to the podium? We do ask that you sign in on the sheet provided at the microphone and that you state your name and whether you're a resident or not prior to making comment.
My name's John McPhee. I am the business manager of Diving Cat Studio Gallery at 246 Bridge Street. And I'm here because next week during the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, I will be out of town in Atlanta at our most significant purchasing show of the year, and we'll spend the entire week in Atlanta planning for the 2024 season in Diving Cat Studio. The Parks and Rec Committee next week will be considering a recommendation to you as a full board with regard to the street closure of 2024. I've been to the committee meeting in the past, and I was the sole individual to come from the public that was in support of the street closure. And I'd like to, much of what I've talked about in the past, you have heard, we are in full support of the street closure and, in fact, would encourage you to consider starting it a little bit sooner in May with Mother's Day, because moms do not cook in the town as every restaurant is full, and there are lots of families walking around town, and it would actually be safer from a public safety standpoint if the street was closed and they could enjoy that. Over and over this past year, we talk to our customers. I set a table out in front of the gallery. Our increase in business was primarily during the day when families were the most significant users of the street closure. People walking their dogs, kids on scooters, teenagers on trick bikes, magicians, as well as all the musicians that came to town. We have seen marvelous growth at Diving Cat Studio through '21, '22, and '23. I didn't really think it possible that we could exceed the 2022 numbers, given all that you hear about retail being down in 2023, and yet we did actually have growth in a record December again. Many of you I saw in the gallery during the holidays, and for that, we express our appreciation. The impact of that is that, yes, I've talked in the past, we're open more hours than anyone else on the street, but in addition, we have expanded our employees to 11, and we now have four full-time employees. So we pay a living wage to our employees. We have several employees who we are their sole means of support, and they live on the wage that they make at Diving Cat Studio. So we are trying to be as responsible, a member of the community as we possibly can. We do own our building, so we are contributing to the school district and recognize the value of all of us contributing to quality schools as a part of the total community health. So we continue to be in support of it. We hope that you will go forward with it again in 2024, and thank you for your time.
Any members of the public joining us virtually? If you're looking to make public comment in this first round of public participation, please raise your hand digitally.
Mr. Lutzker, I've turned on your microphone.
Thank you. David Lutzker here, resident of 243 Morgan Street and president of the Phoenixville Green Team. I wanted to just thank the council for bringing the plastic ban, plastics ban, to into fruition. I've wanted to advise you that there is an effort to bring a ban to the county as a whole. This is spearheaded by leaders of the ACs across the county. So I wanted to make you aware of that and hope that you'll be playing a leading role there. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay.
We have no other hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. Seeing no other members either digitally or in person, we will close the first round of public participation and move on to Section 5 of tonight's agenda. With that, with council's pleasure regarding the December 12 and January 2 meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the December 12 regular meeting minutes and the January 2 reorganization meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions or amendments to the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And with that, we will go into communications and council participation and the updates from council members on any projects or events in the last few weeks.
I wanted to offer my appreciation for the completed, newly completed Phoenix mural on the apartment building. Very impressive, very distinctive, and a great tribute to the former mill that was there, and didn't realize that was even going in or as part of the project. So I appreciate the developers deciding to invest in that kind of public art, because I was in on the approval, and I don't think that was a requirement of theirs, so I appreciate it.
It's no token element either. It is quite a wide canvas they used. It's nice. Any other updates?
Well, you and I were just speaking before the meeting about everything going on at Reservoir Park and how beautiful the work's been there, so just to highlight that, I know it's off-season, but I have heard a lot of comments from the public about it, and as you said, it was really beautiful work and well-needed, so.
Yeah, I think staff and our consultants have done an excellent job. I think they doubled or tripled parking due to the demand of the renovations that have been performed at that park, and a lot of those improvements were done by volunteer groups, so that's been a great asset in the last few years. I had one update I wanted to provide. I wanted to thank and congratulate Elliot Rena. He recently completed his Eagle Scout project, which you will now see around town. Last week, Elliot reached out regarding an idea he had to create mini food pantries similar to the little free libraries that are sort of a global phenomenon. After some discussion with Mary Fuller at PAX, and we even reached out to Evan Brant at our favorite reporter over the Pottstown Mercury, we actually developed a larger vision, and Elliot was able to reuse the old Phoenix newspaper honor boxes that were still remaining around town. So we were able to locate six Phoenix news boxes with the help of Public Works for collecting those, and then his Eagle Scout troop or his associates with his troop helped repurpose these boxes and painted them a PAX green with the troop information as well as the branding for PAX. Mary Fuller, the executive director over at PAX, has reported that they actually have a family that's adopted each one of the six mini free food pantries that will be restocking them multiple times a week. So you'll see those around town similar to where you saw them before. So wanted to thank Elliot Rena and his troop and his assistant troop members who helped him with this project. I think it's a tremendous outcome, and PAX has recently shared this on their social media, and it looks great. So just want to congratulate him on that project. It was a great investment that will last a nice while, so. Any other communications council updates?
Yeah, one minor update, but just wanted to point out some of the progress we've made on the Star and Nut intersection in terms of fine-tuning that intersection following the work that had been done on it. So I know initially, when it was reopened, there were some aspects that were a little less than ideal, and we hope that folks are seeing all the pieces come together to get a really high efficiency and highly effective intersection up and running.
Agreed. I think our contractor was out there last week and Tuesday, possibly, doing some additional amendments to the warrants. Mr. Kirkner.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, adding on about the Star and Nut intersection. I have heard from people about not having a left green arrow on Route 23 eastbound approaching Star, and that's something that a few people have expressed to me they would like to see at some point. I don't know if that's...
Well, magically, you can report to them that it has happened.
Okay.
So...
I haven't been out there for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Optimizations and updates were discussed. Yeah.
Well, I was just going to say, there was a positive post on Facebook, so if that's any measure for any of us.
First one ever?
About the arrow. I know. I was like, yes. So that was great.
And as far as improvements on the north side, Reservoir Park, the reservoir, I look at that every day from my office window and my deck, and I still can't get used to how much improved that looks. And the other thing is the resurfacing of High Street. It's really quite an improvement there. And, you know, kudos to borough staff, Public Works Department, and our engineer and contractors for getting that work done.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report. Mayor Urschler.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those who are joining us here in the room today and those of you who are joining us virtually. Just a couple things to update. On the 27th of December, we were very fortunate to host a very unique kind of preview of an independent film that is being distributed, and it's called Scrambled, and it was actually done by an executive producer. His name is Grady Craig, and he is originally from Charlestown. And so Grady actually chose the Colonial Theater to have kind of a first preview of this in the world. It hasn't even premiered yet, and so it was really exciting to see, certainly, a young executive producer but also who has roots here in Phoenixville and was inspired by our Colonial Theater. And so congratulations to Grady. I'm sure he's back in LA right now, but that was very exciting to have that experience. Also, the Colonial Theater, we want to thank them for New Year's Eve. They actually hosted the mayor's New Year's Eve party. Well, I guess I got to host it, but they did really all the work, so I can't take any of the credit for that. The Colonial Theater did an extraordinary job hosting a community New Year's Eve party, and all of the funds that were raised from that party are actually being used for the renovation of the Colonial Theater. And so, again, just a very unique gem that we have right here within our community. If you haven't had an opportunity to check it out, certainly Blobfest, they're most well-known for, but there are independent films, great concerts and events going on throughout the year at the Colonial, so please check it out. Just wanted to reiterate congratulations to all of our newly elected Borough Council members, and after our reorganization, congratulations to our council officers. Also, congratulations to all newly elected officials throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania at all the different levels, so we're very excited to be working together. Again, the Colonial Theater on the 16th of this month will be hosting the town hall for our representative, our Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan will be here. That event starts at 5:30 PM on the 16th. In order to attend, we ask that, her team asks that you would go to her website, and you'll be able to RSVP for the event there. So check out her official House of Representatives website, and you'll be able to RSVP for that event, which is on the 16th of January. On the 18th of January, we have the Taste of Phoenixville. This helps to benefit Good Samaritan Services. If you've never checked it out, it's a long-running event. It's extraordinary. It's up at the Franklin Commons, but you actually get to taste food from restaurants throughout Phoenixville. I would highly encourage you to check it out if you have the opportunity. And then finally, on the 15th, as we know, MLK Day is coming up, and so for those who may be off, certainly, we hope that you enjoy that long weekend, but at the same time, I just hope as a community, we can take time to reflect certainly on the life of Martin Luther King Jr. and what he means to our country, and certainly what we can continue to do as individuals within our community to ensure that our community continues to be a place where every person is safe, celebrated, and loved. Thank you all very much. Thanks for being here, and thanks for being part of Phoenixville.
Thank you, Mayor Urschler. With that, we'll move on to appointments. Every month, we ask for residents that are interested in being appointed to various boards, committees, or commissions to reach out to your councilperson or staff here at the borough. Current vacancies exist on the Civil Service Commission, Human Relations Commission, and the Tree Advisory Commission. These listings are always up to date on our website with brief descriptions as to how to apply and also what each board, committee, and commission does. With that, we have a couple here to consider. What is council's pleasure tonight?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing David Petty to the zoning hearing board for a new term expiring January 31, 2029.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the resolution to appoint? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Welcome aboard again.
Mr. President, may I make a motion to appoint Amara Thornton-Brown to the Civil Service Commission for a, to reappoint Amara Thornton-Brown to the Civil Service Commission for a new term expiring January 31, 2030.
Oof.
Wow.
Second.
Did I really say 2030?
Motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Ms. Berkeley with astonishment. Questions on this appointment, reappointment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We appreciate Amara re-upping with us.
With that, I'll make a motion to appoint Sismina Skukla to the Human Relations Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2027.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this appointment to the HRC. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We do profoundly appreciate the volunteerism of David, Amara, and Sismina, so thank you for coming forward. With that, Ms. Berkeley?
President, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to recess to executive session for matters of personnel.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, ...acknowledging Jesse Webb for her two years of service on Borough Council, whereas Jesse Webb has served honorably as councilperson for the North Ward since March 8, 2022, and whereas Jesse Webb has served on the Personnel, Public Safety Committee, Parks and Rec Committee, and Infrastructure, Technology, Transportation, and Sustainability Committees since March 8, 2022, and whereas Jesse Webb completes her term of office as the North Ward Council Person on January 2, 2024, and whereas Jesse Webb's participation in the affairs of the borough government has provided invaluable service in the North Ward and borough residents as a whole, and whereas Borough Council wishes to express its appreciation to Jesse Webb for her public service, now therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville, that Jesse Webb is recognized and publicly acknowledged for her efforts to provide for the efficient and effective government which is responsive to the needs of its citizens. This resolution passed Borough Council this 9th day of January. I do appreciate Jesse stepping up when a vacancy appeared, and I sincerely appreciate the time, effort, and energy that she put into the position. Moving right along, we have several other ordinances to consider tonight, and what is council's pleasure for item B? Mr. Kirkner.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I make a motion that council adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Health and Safety by adding a new Part 5 Plastics.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on this motion?
So, not questions, but as I said, I was going to start the new year by making sure we talked through everything on the floor. I think sometimes people think that we do these things very quickly. I know Mr. Kirkner and Mr. Ewald would definitely say this is not something we did quickly, because in policy, we did go through this ordinance many, many times, and I know there's been a lot of talk publicly. Obviously, the Green Team's been very supportive of it. We always want to be supportive and encouraging people to do the right thing. Personally, I love the idea of, you know, getting the bigger places like Acme and Giant moving in that direction where we can make some impact. I also struggled with this back and forth. I think we got the ordinance to a good space. When this first came about, it was during COVID, and it wasn't a time to do this, so we did shelf it for a while. I do think that a lot of the businesses were very confused and very worried about it. I still think we do have to do our due diligence to get out there and make sure they understand. Many of the small places already do what we're capturing in this ordinance, you know, having a reusable bag. I think my biggest struggle with this was image over impact. Are we doing something to feel like we're doing something good? Are we doing something to feel like we're progressive, or are we going to have a big impact? And as I thought through it, I think we have gotten this to a place where we're giving people a year. We've gotten it to a place where most of the small places are already in compliance, and if we can help with litter and things like that, we're getting to a better place. I do think it's really cool. Thank you, Mr. Lutzker, for commenting that the county, because I think we've all discussed that if we can do this at a higher level, at a regional level, I don't know, Mr. Kirkner, if you guys have talked about that, at a regional level, if we can at a state level encourage people, if we can at a federal level, if we can engage companies to make products that are more sustainable, that's where we're going to make the most impact. So this is just a small imprint. So I always want to be cautious of that. I was worried about enforcement. So I talked with David Bulker when we first started this. It's been so long since we started this conversation that I forgot about some of the things he and I talked about, so he and I did talk yesterday about enforcement, because I didn't want to end up in a situation, we all remember the mask ordinance, again, encouraging people to do the right thing, but it didn't go the way we wanted and, you know, wasn't always enforceable, but, you know, as he and I talked, this is enforcement we kind of look at in the same way I look at some of our ordinances that we have that looks at signage downtown. It's always going to be a friendly conversation first, so it's not going to be so punitive, but it is going to be, hey, remember, this is something that we need to do. This is an initiative that we're working towards. So I do think it will continue to be, you know, it'll start with that friendly conversation, but if things don't change and mediation doesn't happen, then it would be enforced, and he felt confident that our codes department could manage that. And then the third piece is just continuing to be out there talking with the businesses, talking with the public so that they understand what we're actually passing and enforcing, because I still think that that's confusing for people. I know we had talked with staff, and Mr. Kirkner, you had talked, I had asked you, I'm no longer on the Policy Committee now that we reworked, but I talked with you about, you know, even though this may be passed tonight, bringing back to the Policy Committee some of the education materials staff will develop if this is passed tonight. So I hope that you will still consider doing that, and I know I just said a lot, but I just wanted to make sure that we're kind of being very transparent about all these things that we're doing, and, you know, why maybe at times I was opposed to this or unsure of it, not because it's not the right thing, but all the reasons that I came to being at a point where I am going to support this tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan.
Well, I think everybody knows where I stand on this to begin with, but if it were on a state level, I would totally be in support of it, but it's just putting the burden on our business and residents when this isn't really going to end up having that much of an impact, I don't think. And encourage, to encourage would be a better thing to do, just to try to tell people to do it or ask people to do it, but by, you know, setting up laws that we have to do that, I think is, I think we're a little bit on overreach on this one, so I'll be voting no, obviously.
Mr. Weiss.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a big thank you to everybody that worked so hard on this. I know there's a lot of work that went in to get it across the finish line and a lot of engagement and communication that happened with the folks in the community, business owners, individuals. I think this is a great example of bringing all those groups together to have meaningful conversations, to move things forward, so I just wanted to thank everybody that played a role in this.
Mr. Kirkner.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, just to follow up on what Ms. Berkeley had said, we had, in Policy Committee, we had a number of long discussions with business people, not only the re-re-plastics or re-re-plastics, I forget how many re-re's there are in that, but they came out in support of it, but we got a lot of good input from business people in the community that went into this. And, you know, I've sent copies of it around, and they, well, you see the concern they're expressing here this evening. You know, I thought of this when I saw Radnor and Media had moved to ban plastic bags. Media has Acme right in the Borough Limits. Radnor has a Giant in the township limits. Phoenixville is blessed to have two supermarkets within its borders. Eat Your Heart at Westchester. Both Giant and Acme, I thought it would be a no-brainer for them. Elmo out there, they're in media, they're all over the place where there are these plastic bag bans. And so for a lot of these establishments, it's a cinch complying with this new ordinance. As far as the Policy Committee goes, first off, you know, Ms. Berkeley, Mr. Ewald, thank you for, I don't know how many meetings we went through with this, and shout out to Borough Manager Gene Crack and also Code Enforcement Director David Bulker and our Solicitor Scott Benlinger, who had a lot of input and guidance into this, too. So this has been a months-long process, so I'm glad to see, it's gotten to this point. As far as talking about it in policy, that's up to the new chair of policy to determine that, but, you know, I will bring it to the floor if no one else does. So I, you know, I look forward to getting on with this. I think putting it into effect January 1, 2025 gives everyone a good, long time to get on board with it, and hopefully we'll see fewer bags, like I said, drive north on Township Line Road approaching Route 23, and it's like a museum of plastic bags in that wooded area there off Township Line Road. So, you know, hopefully, we get some of these off our road sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkner. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so I gave it some thought. My initial question as this was rotating, I asked the Solicitor, is there legal authority in the state of Pennsylvania for a municipality to actually do this? There is. So we're not overstepping either the Constitution or the Commonwealth or the municipal code to do this, so we have the authority and the right to do so. The question of impact, it's interesting to me, Philadelphia has this ban in place also, and one day I went into the Wawa in the University of Pennsylvania. And one day I went into the Wawa in the University of Pennsylvania store and ordered a few things, wanted a bag, and I needed to get a cloth bag at a Wawa. And I thought, oh, my God, Wawa is going to have to eventually equip all its stores with, you know, and charge for whatever, I think I was charged twenty-five cents for the bag. I have two of those in my car now, and I walk in and out of the house with, with the bag for all sorts of purposes. So the cumulative effect of having these bans is once you engage them and once you start having them in place, the reusable bags, grocery bags, starts being a part and parcel of your, of your vehicle, the same you have a window scraper. So for that whole judgment experience, plus I do appreciate not only the hard work, but also that we have a year to communicate this and move it forward. I was persuaded, I'm persuaded that it's, that it will have a value, that it's, because I don't like passing laws, it was kind of the feeling I had about the mask ban and the mask regulations, it's pointless to pass laws that are either unenforceable or pointless or never used. I think this will have, that will not be the case with this one. So that's why I will support it.
Seeing any other comments? Mr. Kirchner?
I'll, I'll jump in. I've gone back and forth on this. Honestly, not really sure where I'm at on this. The thing that I was frustrated about with it, just that I know we've had lots of committee conversations, but not everyone's able to get out to the committees. And I just wanted to make sure business owners had ample time to review the final draft, which was completed in November. And then, so for me, I just, not that I'm opposed to it, opposed to the idea of banning plastics, I'm kind of more in line with what Dana said, but I just think that the final draft was rushed too quickly, and I don't think I'm there yet.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those.
Just as I always do for ordinances, this was advertised in the Pottstown Mercury on December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. And as was mentioned, the effective date is January of two thousand and twenty-five, so lots of good discussion and outreach can occur. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six, two. Thank you for everybody's work on this item. And lastly, under ordinances to consider tonight, we have an amendment to Chapter fifteen, sort of our bi-monthly updates to Chapter fifteen.
I'll make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen motor vehicles.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, and this motion or this ordinance update is slightly different than some of our other ones that get workshopped through policy extensively. This one is addressing vehicle violations that we're seeing in and around the Renaissance School during pickup and drop-off. So we felt it was appropriate to bring this to council for, to expedite the process. Mr. Crack or Mr. Benlinger, is there a summary, a brief summary to provide that as we scheduled to advertise?
Sure. Normally, as you, I'm okay, my computer's telling me, I can't speak, but as smart as I am. Normally, this would go through Policy Committee, and it is set up as a full ordinance that includes other things. So I'll just give a snapshot of that. The first section is Section two oh seven, which is Buchanan Street. With the, the building of the new senior building where the old Public Works Building was at, we had to revise that to reflect that there is going to be a bit of a two-way on Buchanan between Bridge Street and Breckenridge. And so this ordinance takes that into consideration. Interestingly enough, with the same idea at the Old Borough Hall, there's a parking lot and so, in the back of the building, so there's a two-way needed there. But what, in looking up that ordinance, it, I do not know how long ago this occurred, but the original direction for Dean Street was south between Church and Washington. I've been here a long time, and many people have been here a long time, and everybody's been using it going north. So I'm reflecting that in the ordinance to correctly change the direction to where, what everybody is using, and that is a northern route. And then it also takes into consideration, it stops at the parking lot just north of Hall Street so that people can come in and out of the new development there. Then to piggyback on the concept with Renaissance, there are two pieces to that. One is to only allow, there is no left turn between seven AM and eight AM and three o'clock PM and four PM, except for school buses. And that's for the entrance just slightly west of, at the intersection of Fillmore and Crombie. And then also, because we now have a new signalized intersection at St. Orinut, which was talked about earlier today, we need to, there is a sign that has no left turn onto Valley Road from Nut Road, so this takes that into consideration. And then the biggest piece of this on Fillmore is that with the drop-offs and pickups in the morning and in the afternoon, people are parking on Fillmore Street as far back as Utley and actually Bunning Road. So this ordinance takes into consideration, put up, you can't park on the side of the road and wait to get into Renaissance Academy. And then lastly, I believe, lastly, yes, we have a number of locations where our trash and recycling trucks can't get in and out or make the appropriate turns. So these, these five locations at Brower, Buchanan, Buttonwood, Jones, and Oxford have limitations on certain days between seven AM generally and two o'clock PM. So that's what this ordinance takes into consideration. Normally, this would have been vetted at policy, but because of the urgency of issues on Fillmore Street and Renaissance Academy, the whole ordinance is coming before you tonight.
Thank you for that summary, Gene. And just to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Ewell said, even though this didn't go to policy as it traditionally would, some of these issues we tried to resolve through the police, it came up in Public Safety Committee and was there for almost a year as the police tried to work through it, and we never want to be the bad guy, but unfortunately, this is what we have to do to keep people safe, so.
I'll, I'll just echo that, and myself and Mr. Kirchner have both been up on Fillmore when pickup is happening in the afternoon. People treat Fillmore Street as if it's a parking lot, and but a lot of times in the middle of these parents picking up students are people who aren't, who thought that the traffic was just going to keep going until they pull into the opposing lane. It's, it's, it's gravely disrespectful to the borough for these people behaving this way. I've never heard of just parking yourself in the middle of the street for fifteen, twenty minutes, you know, and like whole lines of cars doing that. So we're, we're going to continue to work with this, and I appreciate also that the Borough Manager has tried to communicate with the Renaissance Academy leadership, but we now need to, you know, really try to crack down, and I appreciate us being, taking the step to move forward with this immediately rather than postponing, or not postponing, but it would be a three-month period until we can get this thing adopted. If we can adopt it, if we can approve it's being publicized tonight, and we can act on it next month, and that, that'll help move things forward this school year. Thank you.
Yes, with, with regard to Section three in this draft ordinance, it talks of no parking, standing, or stopping signs shall be placed is, there are parking spots on Fillmore Street just west of Utley Alley. And on, on Grant Street and Wilson Street and I think Fairview Street, when we were having the problem last year, and Mr. Moore talked about cars just blocking the lane of traffic, we had that on Grant Street previously with, during Renaissance pickup and drop-off. I mean, backing up an entire block from Fillmore, from Fairview to Franklin Avenue. The signs there say, no student pickup or drop-off. And here we're talking about no parking, standing, or stopping. Can we get signs that say, no, no student pickup or drop-off on that section of Fillmore Street that has the cutout for the, the parking spots in front of the Fillmore Village homes? Is that?
What we've done is because the actual drop-off and pickup is occurring on the west side of the backside of Renaissance Academy within the property lines, what we're trying to do here is limit people from being able to stop, stand, or park along the roadway. Unlike what you mentioned with Grant Street, there, there's no designated parking spots on Grant Street, it's just the street itself. So the signage is slightly different because those six boxes, and I've carved those out in this language to, to allow, those spots are for anybody. I can't just say it's only for the residents of Fillmore, or it's this or that. It's, it's, it's available as part of the subdivision land development plan that was approved for Fillmore Village, that's why it's saying what it says here.
And another issue with pickup, Renaissance pickup, is that there are cars, and I saw it with my own eyes, I saw kids walking across Franklin Avenue to the rec center, and there are cars parked in our rec center waiting for kids to get out of Renaissance Academy. I don't know what we can do about that. One day, it was a pickup truck with a trailer parked across five spaces, and I saw the child walk from Renaissance with a Renaissance shirt on, get into that truck. So they are using that. And also people who go to Franklin Commons are parking in the rec center lot too, which
In Council chambers, we just lost power for a moment there and then had to reconnect back to Zoom, so we were just, no action was taken or business conducted, we just were waiting for Zoom to come back on, just as a point of clarification. Is that sufficient?
That works.
Okay. With that, Mr. Kirchner had wrapped up his comments. We do have a motion and a second regarding scheduling and advertising Chapter fifteen. Were there other questions or comments regarding Chapter fifteen? One point I wanted to make, this is not a, this is not working to scold Renaissance Academy itself, our police chief, our Borough Manager have actually met with their executive team, they are in support of enforcement, they're in support of, they've tried to communicate this to the parents directly with no, with little or no avail, so secondary action has been decided that we, we need to take secondary action for. So I just want to make sure that we are not here, we're not doing this as a punishment to Renaissance Academy itself, just the bad behaviors of the parents. Any other questions or comments on the scheduling or advertising of the Chapter fifteen amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero, that'll be scheduled, that'll be advertised and up for our vote at the next council meeting. With that, we will move on. Under Section eleven, public hearings, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so under Section twelve, we have reports from committees, boards, and commissions. Ms. Dugan with Harb.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for ninety-nine Bridge Street as recommended by Harb in the action memo of January ninth.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley, and I believe Ms. Dugan has some comment.
Yeah, I actually, I thought this was going to end up in the consent agenda if I didn't vote no on this, and here's my problem with this situation. This is that the old bank building, which was apparently put in there in two thousand and four, which makes me wonder how it ever got through Harb in the first place. I didn't start on Harb until I was six, so you can't blame me. But the problem is that the distillery, I mean, like the Bluebird, used pictures of this as, as an example of what is appropriate, and they used that, and then they, they passed through and they, they got their thing done. And now this building is changing, doing some changes, and they're using the, the Bluebird as a, as an example. So it's like this circular thing that we're kind of stuck in. Now, the improvements that are made here, I'm totally like for a Harb, from a Harb perspective, is totally fine, it's an improvement to the building to make it look the way it's going to. So I'm fine with that part of it. It's just that I think that we need to really take a look at what we approve when it comes to the Harb stuff, because everything we approve is going to be used as a basis for the next thing. It's always going to be a stepping stone, and there's no way to claw that back. And I did want to make a point to let everybody know, let's keep our eyes on, you know, anything that comes around that's new or, you know, whatever.
Thank you, and I do agree, the, it is an improvement. I don't think anywhere on Bridge Street was meant to have sad brown corporate glass as a, as a glazing that was approved. So I think the, the measures that the applicant is making to improve the glazing alone is going to be more appealing than what is existing, so. Questions or comments on the Harb application for ninety-nine bridge? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero, Ms. Dugan.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the renovations and additions to one, two, three Main Street as recommended by the Harb action memo of January ninth.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by. motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion for 123 Main Street, our former civic senator? In terms of HARB?
And I do want to make a comment on this, too. I saw this. It looks lovely. I'm really happy that the new owner did try to keep where it was before, since it used to be an armory. It was like, there's a historical nature of it, and it's staying in that. I will keep my opinions about the parking for the next time this comes around. But as far as the HARB standards, I think this looks really nice.
Any other questions or comments regarding 123 Main Street for HARB? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Anything else, Ms. Dugan?
No, that's all.
We move on to Mr. Moore with Planning Commission. I will just comment, some of the planning commission actions tonight will be a little bit different than we had been doing. We'll be providing more background prior to a motion being required. So Mr. Moore, if you'd like to kick us off, then I think Mr. Denlinger will take over.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we do have three projects that were approved in the December meeting by the Planning Commission. And I'll allow, so the borough solicitor will explain each one and also provide an opportunity for the developers to speak to council if they so choose, and then we'll proceed to a motion.
Thank you.
Sure. So the first application we have before us tonight is the development known as 785A Star Street. The application is to construct an 8,800 square foot commercial pad site along Star Street, in addition to the existing shopping center that is located on the site, as well as a new parking area with 18 parking spaces, and the realignment and elimination of some existing parking spaces for a total net gain of 11 parking spaces, along with sidewalks and other related improvements. The application was before the planning commission several times and received a recommendation for approval by a six to one vote on December 14, 2023, by the planning commission, which is reflected in their action memo. We will accept public comment on this specific item after the applicant has presented his project and council has had a chance to ask questions of the applicant. So I see the applicants here today, and they can talk about their project in a bit more detail and answer council's questions.
Good evening. Thank you. Adam Brower with EB Washington Associates. The applicant Kurt is with me as well. Yes, we worked with the planning commission through several meetings, refining the plan. And as Scott noted, it is a new building that would be constructed at the shopping center right along Star Street. And again, it's an 8,800 square foot building, complement the existing shopping center with additional retail. I think Kurt has possibly a food oriented type of use for one use in the building. It'll probably have more than one use. We do have the parking right in front of the building, but also, of course, being where it's at with relation to Star Street, we did incorporate in sidewalks coming off the existing sidewalk network to come right into the building, as well as implement an area for bicycles and just general, made it pedestrian friendly to, again, promote the community that is in walking distance to visit the site. There's been some other changes that we're looking at, improving circulation, shopping center, things like that. But really just focused on trying to enhance that area. Right now, it's grass area right now. So thank you. That's a good view coming off of Star Street. But, and also, I would point out, we are proposing an underground stormwater management system that would be underneath the parking lot. And understanding that in that area, we do have drainage issues. I'm sure we're having that tonight. So we did expand that system a little bit bigger to try to really, really limit any outflow coming from the proposed improvements, but also we're taking runoff that's coming overland from the side. And we're not, we're keeping that in the shopping center area. In other words, that's not going to go out on the Star Street. We're piping that right into the existing piping system that then goes back to the existing detention base. And so trying to be conscious of the stormwater issues that the borough has in that area and really hoping to get, going forward with the project and, again, provide a complement to the existing center. If there's anything else that we can possibly, any questions that we could answer, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, if council has any questions.
I'll tee off. I appreciate you here tonight with this application. I know this has gone through a number of revisions. I had, I had one question because of the way it's oriented with Star Street. And I understand the three sides is sort of face the opposite direction, the fourth wall being the service entrance with the fence, the additional landscaping that I believe has been sort of negotiated in. I am wondering if it's possible to do, to continue the parapet around, if that's architecturally feasible. My concern is when you, as a main entrance to town, you're coming down Star Street from not, you're going to see the backside of this building, which with this design is unavoidable. But I was wondering if the parapet might be able to be extended to further mask the HVAC and other utilities that would be up on the roof. And that was my first comment that I wanted to at least lob to start some conversation.
Got it. Thank you. Kurt Walter, representing ownership.
Comments accepted. We did address that with the screening that you see in the schematic up on the board today. We felt like that was a very good compromise to screen the actual units in a way that complements the building. Also, I'd just back up a little bit and say thank you to the planning commission. We did have a number of different iterations. Frankly, we shrunk the building in order to have it be more conducive to the neighborhood. And you also saw there's a patio area off the side facing Star Street, which hopefully will have a tenant that the borough, the community, be really pleased with. And that makes a really nice community area and socialization and a nice place to gather. We'd like to not have to do that parapet in the back. We need, it raises access issues when people are climbing the roof to do service and so forth. We felt like the screening was a very acceptable or appropriate kind of solution to your concerns about looking at equipment up on a roof.
I just do want to follow up on the question of the, because looking at the plans, the question of the patio, the covered area that you're showing in the renderings, is that a potential add-on, or is that definitely going to be built?
Oh, it's going to be built.
Oh, okay. Because I didn't quite, I didn't quite see it on the, on the plans. I don't know whether, maybe I'm just missing, seeing it there. So.
Do that with outdoor seating in that area.
I just want to take a minute to express my appreciation for the amount of attention that seems to have gone into the stormwater management. You're exactly right. This has been a problem in this area. We do have residents that are constantly worried on whether like this hits. So it's nice to see that amount of attention and effort put in to ensure that we're not exacerbating any existing problems and if anything, kind of improving the problem, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was actually, as a planning commission representative, that was actually a significant amount of the discussion between the borough engineer and so forth on that challenge. So appreciate it.
Yeah, I also wanted to add that I appreciate you guys taking, putting attention towards the stormwater. I was just wondering if you, as you were looking at, you said parking lot configurations and flow, if you took a look at if all this parking was necessary, or maybe some other areas within the parking lot, if there was opportunities to reduce impervious and what those conversations were, if you would consider maybe reducing impervious in other less necessary areas?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that did come up with at least one of your planning commission members. We did a parking count. We had a traffic engineering company, traffic planning and design, in fact, do that assessment. And they looked at that. You know, I can't speak in detail to the study, I'm not a traffic engineer, but basically looked at it with multiple variations. Obviously, looked at it peak time. And I think they applied, you know, an ever so slight margin, like a 1.1 factor. And actually, with what we came in at, we were only like literally three spaces over. So there was a little bit of concern about taking out parking. I mean, obviously, that would have, would have helped, you know, candidly, it would have been a cheaper alternative to the underground system, for example. But because of where we were at with that parking study, we were a little concerned about backing out. I mean, you could take out the three spaces, but not a real appreciable amount with what that assessment was. You're welcome.
Adam, can you talk a little bit about the tree that's to the rear of the, the new rear of the building?
Sure.
And what the discussions were there, planning commission?
Sure. So it is a grass lot with, I think, two trees. Of course, one of them being, being a question, and it's close to the property line. It's a, you know, it's a good, it's a larger tree. It's a, you know, I don't recall offhand, but sake of discussion, 12 15 inch, probably 15 inch diameter oak tree. The corner of the building will be in the drip zone of it. So there was, of course, concern about preserving the tree as it turns out. So we did some small refinements with that back. Obviously, we didn't adjust the building per se, but for example, we had sidewalk that went to the end of the building. We tried to back that off again, little air, trying to reduce as much of disturbance as we could in that corner. And part of the, of the two waivers, that is one of them. And the, I guess, caveat to that waiver was, you know, again, when you're doing any work in that corner at that quarter of a drip zone, if you will, that if you were excavating, you know, of course, that's when you're concerned with the roots, that that would be done by hand. We're certainly agreeable to that, and in fact, in looking at the way the lot lays out, and if you're just standing there, it looks relatively flat, there is a slight pitch to it, and actually, that corner would not be an excavation. So I think the good news is that it should, while we're still doing some disturbance in that corner, it's not, it's a little bit of fill versus excavation. So it should even be better likelihood of not damaging the tree.
I would just add, for council's benefit, there was a lot of discussion at planning commission about making sure that tree is preserved and that the roots aren't damaged. And I know Mr. Moore will discuss the waivers, but the condition of one of the waivers is very specific that the roots need to be protected as best reasonably possible.
I, you know, I still have concerns about the parapet, just on the, that wall, on the, on the fourth side here. And if, I'm not a designer, so are there any other options for other materials that would still provide the access there that you're worried about, but provide some form of screening? Understanding that there's likely future redevelopment on other lots here, I would expect, you know, this won't be the last thing built here, but it is quite a, quite a wall as an entrance. And I do appreciate the ground level work, that, you know, the service entrance and entrances. You know, it's an improved view shed, but if there's other materials that could be considered that would allow for easier access or temporary removal, things like that. I'm not sure if they exist, but.
I think if you, you looked at a view from Star Street, I mean, down in that direction, it's not going to look like the view you're seeing here. You're not going to get exposed to this big old block wall. It really won't be, there's a lot of money escaping out on Star Street. I think we even came around the corner and hit some shrubs.
Well, I was going to suggest, I mean, maybe a kind of a soft buffer would be to, to enhance that with landscaping, which would also help buffer that, you know, and we could look to Gilmore Associates for some guidance on that. I don't know if it would be, you know, combination of evergreen and deciduous, obviously deciduous less buffering this time of year, but maybe that would be an alternative that gives you, you know, to achieve the same goal with the buffering of it.
And I mean, I think it is, you know, for commercial infill, I think it's an attractive three sides, and that's why the fourth side jumps out. So, yeah.
Well, if I could follow up on that, what do you mean by the wood landscaping? Or because I'm also seeing a wood fence around there. So is that considered wood landscaping, or are you talking about wooded planting?
Question, though. So, yes, we are doing the privacy fence, if you will, which was part of that and the low level vegetation. But no, what I was thinking was, you know, a tree, you know, trees, you know, full freestanding, whether it's evergreen or deciduous or a combination.
Yeah, actually, that was what I was thinking, too. I mean, if you could put some trees that get a good height in front of that, that would, that would soften that, that big wall there.
Right.
So I would encourage that as part of the approval. I don't know if we can make that part of the approval. But we can do anything we want, right?
Right. Yeah. Any motion would just include that as an additional condition of approval.
Is it, is it possible to just vary the materials on that wall? So keep the profile that you want, and then, so it breaks it up and it's not just, because we don't know what the renderings are the renderings, and it could just be one big plain white wall or black wall, or is it possible to vary the materials a bit to, kind of like I have in the front, maybe use some metal or?
We share the same concerns with being expressed here. We want our building in addition to be pleasant, look great in addition to the community. So some reasonable restriction or requirement that we modify what we're showing or add to it, have absolutely no disagreement or pushback to that at all. If those low shrubs were arboriding, for example, you know, it might, it might provide more screening. Happy to, happy to agree to that. And maybe, you know, we wait. I really don't want to wait for approvals, that we get recommendations from.
Mr. President, may I ask if council is agreeable to that, adding that into the, to the approval about the, the trees?
I certainly am.
I am.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
I like, I like the trees, but not the arborites. I'm not a fan of the giant arborite, because they, but so I think Gilmore can, can work with you on a number of recommendations. And, and, you know, it is the vantage point from street level, driving by in the car that I'm concerned about. So I, I, I don't doubt that Gilmore would be able to come up with a structured plan to follow.
Right. I would suggest if there is a motion made to approve this development, that at the end of the motion, it be with the addition, with the additional condition to add vegetation with a greater height satisfactory to the borough planner. And that way, Gilmore could coordinate with staff, having heard the comments of council here today, and also the developer to make sure that what is installed is reflective of our discussion today.
Are you suggesting that as a separate motion after the motion carries?
No. Correct. We have no motion at this point.
Right. Right.
So since there's one application that went through that I feel tricked on, not you guys, the materials that you're depicting in the renderings, are these the intended materials designed or in the family of? This won't be a white brick building instead of a red brick building? Not naming names, but. So it'll be very similar to the renderings that were supplied to us. I guess this was, yeah, in September. Other questions, comments? Other questions, comments? And this may be, how many tenants, judging by the service entrances, this could be as many as five or as few as one?
Me, that's true.
Okay.
Three, yeah.
And that doesn't have an impact on our requirements in any regards, whether it's five tenants or three or one?
No, because the the parking requirements are based on square footage.
Other questions or comments? Scott?
Uh, with that, I've entertained a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, are there any, uh, comments from the public who are here in person? Uh, seeing none, are there any comments from the public who are with us via Zoom? All right, I see none. Uh, so with that, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, I will make the motion after I get you to confirm this additional language with the addition of screening vegetation on the rear of the building after consultation with the Borough Land Planner.
I would add with a greater height.
With a greater height. Greater height of what?
That then shown on the
screen.
Rendering.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So I would like to make a motion for the borough, for the council to approve the, um, I'd like to make a motion for the borough to to approve uh, motion to adopt a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision land development plan for the development known as seven eighty-five A Star Street with the addition of screening vegetation with a height greater than shown on the rendering of the rear of the building, uh, after consultation with the Borough Land Planner as approved by the, uh, Phoenixville Planning Commission six zero, six one. Second.
And that takes into account all the items from the action memo.
Correct, the items for the action memo, um, are incorporated in the resolution and to the extent, uh, that they were important enough to be pulled out, like the condition to the one waiver, uh, they were included, uh.
Yeah, if you, if I may, just to clarify, for the Borough Council members, at this time, the uh, the two waivers requested was one from twenty-three, three oh six dot one dot D do not require infiltration at the required minimum rate, provided that amended soils are included as a part of the development to offset the deficit in infiltration. That's the technical terms associated with the improved, uh, stormwater management. And the other was related to the tree, uh, waiver for against twenty-five on ten dot two dot A to not require a full drip line wide tree protection zone conditioned on the following, that the tree protection zone that will be created will be fully fenced and established throughout construction being pulled back only for the purpose of hand digging within the tree protection zone for building slab preparation. Those are all the conditions associated with, um, not requiring a full drip line wide protection zone for that tree that's, uh, adjacent to the property.
Any comments or discussion from council?
We need some.
It was second.
Sorry. About that.
A six to one vote on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I need to start over? Okay. Um, again, uh, we will accept public comment on this item after the applicant has presented his project and council has had a chance to ask the applicant questions.
Hello, my name is Charlie Scanzello with T and M Associates. We're the engineer of record, uh, for the, uh, ninety-nine Bridge Street Development, Phoenix Crossing. Here representing, uh, the owner and applicant with me here today as well, Mr. Bobsek. Uh, just to expand upon what Mr. Denlinger described for development, we're proposing, um, to maintain the existing building, converting the former bank into, uh, apartment units and a commercial retail. In addition to that, much of the existing site is to remain. However, we are proposing a few improvements such as, uh, the ADA curb ramps are to be brought into current ADA compliance standards, uh, providing an ADA route from the parking lot to the building. In addition, we're proposing a dumpster in the rear lot, along with enclosure to service the building and apartment units, as well as the commercial tenant. Uh, just to expand upon the parking, uh, we've taken a lot of time deliberation, working with the borough and planning staff to really lock down, uh, our strategy for the parking and the, um, just the the combination of public versus private parking that we're providing. So generally, we have a striping as well as signage strategy to designate and delineate uh, the public spaces between the commercial tenant, the residential tenants, as well as privates or excuse me, those are the private spaces and then public spaces that will be available to Phoenixville Public uh, and continue to be leased, uh, with the borough and they will be paid for by the current payment app that the borough uses. Uh, generally, there will be, uh, forty-seven private spaces and seventy-seven public spaces. Of those five private spaces, uh, will be installed with the electric vehicle charging stations. And then four of the public, uh, parking spaces will be installed with the EDCS. Uh, this is the portion that is required to be installed at this time. Uh, just to expand on that, uh, as required, we are also providing a mechanical capa- electrical capacity for future installation of up to twenty-five EB parking spaces. In addition to all these improvements, we are providing, uh, revisions and provisions for easements, uh, whether they're existing or new easements need to be put in place uh, that are crossing the site, uh, as well as additional open space in the rear. As part of our, uh, proposed development, we have two waivers included, one being for open space in environmentally sensitive areas. Uh, this is because the majority of the site is considered an environmentally sensitive area, being within floodplain, a majority being in the floodplain. Uh, and all of the viable open space, uh, being within that sensitive area. Uh, just to clarify on that, the current Schuylkill River Trail is going through there as well, which is all within the floodplain. So, uh, reason being, we're asking for that waiver, as well as the deferment of sidewalk to connect from our site to the Schuylkill River Trail. Uh, we understand that there are future, uh, improvements to be made for the Star Street extension. And we wish to defer the sidewalk provision until the time that Star Street has been extended, where we can more appropriately, uh, provide a a better design for that pedestrian connection. All that being said, uh, those are the reasons we are here tonight, seeking council's approval, uh, of our plans and waivers. Thank you.
Questions from council? Can you, um, uh, tell us how many, once you have made the private number of spaces, how many remaining public spaces will be available in that lot?
There will be seventy-seven public spaces available. And to further clarify, these are off-street spaces. All of the, uh, existing on-street spaces along Ashland and Market will be maintained as well. Uh, there are sixteen on-street spaces that will, uh, remain. But as far as the off-street spaces, there are seventy-seven.
And then how many, how many residential, uh, associated with the building?
Associated with the building will be forty-seven. That'll be thirty-seven for residential and ten for the commercial.
And while the, well, Market Street looks like a driveway, that is actually a a borough street?
Today, it is a borough street.
As well as Ashland, to the point of property termination?
To the western side of Market.
Right, okay. So while it looks like the driveway that, uh, there will be improvements to the the ramping, you said? Or is that just the access to the building?
Uh, yeah, so there are six, uh, curb ramps that will be improving, uh, and they are, uh, four along the primary act, that middle access drive into the parking lot. There are four surrounding there, and then there are two on either side of Ashland Street from the parking lot over to the building.
And then will Market, is Market signaled as a a single one-way in, one-way out, or is this currently a two-way street? And does this proper, does this application delve into that? Is that different?
We we really sat down with, uh, Charlie and and Andrew and worked our way through it. We realized that the Star Street extension is in design stage at this point in time. When that extension goes through, it will create the opportunity to, uh, take Ashland Street from the intersection of where Star meets at the back of the building, which is right, right back here. Start Ashland will go all the way across, will get the appropriate easements. At that point, we'll be able to close Market and break that, uh, intersection off there and put, uh, the the sidewalk back uh, as if it didn't, if it's as if it was never there.
And so in a future development, the applicant is comfortable with closing Market Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to add a little bit of additional background, uh, as PennDOT has basically mandated us to close Market Street when the Star Street extension is complete.
Makes sense. Uh, what do you, what are the envisioned? I I saw the the sketch layouts, uh, but are you, are you expecting a single tenant on the first floor? Are you expecting multiple tenants? What's the, what's your commercial first floor dream?
Yeah. Most likely envision one tenant. Uh, we don't have anything under contract yet, but, uh, been been talking to a couple, couple of businesses and it would be most likely one tenant.
So so on the plans, I think it just mentions, uh, carved out studios. Those would be for one tenant, those are not individual, they're not, A, they're not studio apartments.
Yeah, and this concept layout is showing a barber shop salon, so it's like stylist studios.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not micro apartments on the first.
Mr. Kirkner. President, you know, if I may, um, I'm I'm trying to, uh, figure out the connection to the the Schuylkill River Trail. And on, um, uh, let me see, un- under, they now therefore be resolved, number two. A, well, number two, it says defers strict compliance with the following provisions of the Saldo. And then one of those provisions is installation of a new sidewalk is deferred. So we're deferring deferral of the sidewalk, I got a little confused there. Um, so so what's going on with the connection to this Google River Trail and this?
Yes, so the intent is, uh, a later date, once Star Street has been extended. Because as part of Star Street sidewalk will, uh, almost certainly be involved. Uh, and Star Street is being extended on that western portion towards the north to connect, uh, it will connect with Ashland Street. And then at that time, there will be a more logical, uh, and more appropriate connection for sidewalk to continue from our site along the Star Street extension and then ultimately connect to the Schuylkill River Trail. So that is why our intent is to defer that sidewalk until Star Street is developed. Uh, because right now it's still in the early developing stages. Uh, we're not exactly sure how that's going to ultimately end up. We don't want to put in something that will be redundant or create, uh, potential for people not to use a sidewalk or cut across an area that they are that the intent is not for them to walk across, uh, be lining it elsewhere or potentially unsafe pedestrian crossing situation, uh, or confusing situation. So that is why we intend to defer the sidewalk until Star Street is done.
Okay, and I I guess for the sense of this language, the Star Street exten- extension is referred to as the French Creek Parkway. Because that was the original language in the, when when this plan was approved. So okay, so we're deferring compliance with the deferral of the connection.
I think we, aren't we conferring?
Have I confused?
Yeah, you're, we're, we're they're deferring compliance with the twenty-two, four-one-nine dot two dot uh, two dot D, which would require a sidewalk connection to the trail. So we're def- deferring compliance with that until until Star Street is complete. And then they, and then they build the appropriate, you know, walkway connection to the trail.
Mr. Kirkner, I I think maybe you're taking issue with my language and the resolution. Um, it it's a bit of, bit of a, uh, belt and sus- suspenders type language, um, that I typically use, uh, instead of a waiver, because we're not waiving the requirement, we're deferring it to a time that makes sense. Um, and, uh, the the language I use is kind of in case there's multiple deferrals and you go down the list. It it seems certainly, um, uh, redundant, I guess, when there's a, when there's a single deferral.
Although I guess if you defer a deferral, you just defer it even more than you originally had deferred.
Deferred squared.
It don't, it doesn't cancel out.
I just wanted to make sure this was written in a way so a new owner couldn't come in here and try to, you know, finagle some kind of loophole here.
The, uh, the entrance that you show for the residents in the northeast corner, uh, and sort of that basement alignment, is that, is there anything in that? Is that just a lobby on the backside? I I've never looked closely that in this image you show that, is there anything else in that floor? Is that actually?
Yeah, it's a general lobby area, there's going to be a mail package room, and then there's access to the elevator and stairwell that takes you up to the
But the the rest of the area, the other seventy percent, is that actually?
Yeah, it's a little dis- it's a little dis- it's like up the next level. So it's just that kind of left corner.
Everything that's blank actually is just gray.
That, that's, yeah.
Okay, foundation, okay. Other questions, comments?
The the lower level of this floor is in the flood, is that correct? So, and it in design with that in mind, whoever might be the, or the base is storage, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, the basement is storage. We're actually relocating all the electrical breakers and panels out of there, so it's literally just going to be dry storage and pipes coming in, but other than that, there's nothing down there.
Right.
And the glazing is going to be updated to something other than what it currently is. We we didn't, we didn't have you come up during the Harp conversation, but, uh, I'll speak to that momentarily.
Yeah, we are switching out roughly seventy of the windows, uh, around the building uniformly to have operable windows within the dwelling units to meet ventilation requirements. Um, so we're going to be updating, uh, several of those windows so that it has more of a, you know, not just the stationary feel for for an office building that it was. Um, and then in addition to that, you know, as part of our renting, we're updating, replacing the the storefront entrance doors, adding the awnings, signage, paint, updated lighting to make it feel more, you know. Please. Yep, public comment?
All right, if there are no more questions or comments, council, uh, is there anyone here in person, uh, who would like to make public comment on this application?
Please. Um, my name's John McPhee. Um, well, Diving Cat Studio will celebrate its sixteenth anniversary. Um, well, Diving Cat Studio will celebrate its sixteenth anniversary uh this coming March. I personally have been in Phoenixville for the last twenty-five years. In nineteen ninety-eight, I began the process of demoing the steel mill uh and spent ninety-eight and ninety-nine uh overseeing that. And then subsequently handled the development of the master plan for the redevelopment of the steel site. I personally designed this building and had an office in it for a period of time. So when I handled the initial land development approval, I stood before council. Rich Kirchner is the only member who remembers that. And I agreed that the parking lot would be in perpetuity shared for public use. I applaud both the developer uh in the adaptive reuse of this, as well as council and the planning commission. I think it's imperative that this public parking be in perpetuity. Uh there was some confusion uh that arose with Customers Bank and my agreement before council handling the land development approval that there would always be public access to parking on this, on this lot. And I think it's imperative that it's part of this solution of Phoenix Hills uh parking and access, especially with the trail being there, the enhanced trail and the eventual improvements of the Star and Bird Street intersection. So um I uh, I hope that the wording in the resolution ensures that future when eventually everything gets sold, that when it gets sold that no one can take away that public parking for the good of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in person who would like to make public comment on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comment? Uh seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Sidera. I'd like to make a motion, uh make a motion for a resolution of the Council of Borough of Phoenixville um county of Pennsylvania to officially approve preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for development known as uh ninety-nine Bridge Street, also known as uh Phoenix Crossing uh as approved by uh Phoenixville Planning Commission uh seven-zero with the two waivers as proposed.
Second. Much by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the application of one, two, three Main Street. Uh, the application is to redevelop the existing building, which was formerly the Borough Civic Center into eighteen residential units with two ADA accessible units, fifteen parking spaces, landscaping and related improvements. As you know, we approved the adaptive reuse of the building subject to conditions thereof at our July eleventh, twenty-twenty-three meeting. And the plan satisfies those conditions. The application was before the planning commission several times and received a recommendation for approval by a six zero-one vote, so there was one abstention um on December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Again, we will accept public comment after the application has presented, applicant has presented its project and council has had a chance to ask questions of the applicant.
Good evening, Mike Kajak representing MEK Two Property Group. Unfortunately, Scott from inland design was not able to be present tonight. Um but one thing that we made uh modification to parking after the December meeting was making a um alteration to the front curbing, which is presently painted yellow and a no parking from here to corners existing about sixty-five feet. Um with discussion with Owen Heim, we're going to be relocating that um no parking from here to curb sign to twenty feet from Hall Street. Which is going to allow us to have a two additional parking spaces for zone eight parking, uh which is for primary residents of, of the borough. Um, we, we also had a recommendation by um Gilmore Associates to add a park bench at the front of the property near the flagpole. So we made an additional modification. I'm not sure if you've received these plans. Uh Scott had forwarded them on. But right at the base of the flagpole, there'll be a, a public park bench uh for anybody who would like to sit there and be present. Um in the event that we could make a modification to the no parking from here to corner, we could potentially add three parking spaces at the front of the property that there is right now. Um, and we had planting a series of trees ranging from various species with a nice focus of a cherry agnawa, which is very blossomy in the spring, but it maintains a, a nice height uh without going and having extensive rooting systems that could possibly damage the sidewalks. Um, we're making a bunch of modifications per Harb application uh to the windows at the property. Uh we're going to be changing all the windows to a darker framing um which is similar to the one-nineteen south Main Street structure that's coming in um which is, was met with Harb approval. Any questions? I'm here to answer any you may have.
Mr. Kajak, before I uh open up the questions with council, um am I correct that the changes that you just mentioned since the December fourteenth planning commission meeting were uh based on comments you received from the consultants at that meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Um and with that, I would open it up to council for questions and comments.
Um, Mr. Solicitor, I just wanted to note that the resolution uh page two states that it was approved by a vote of seven, nothing. Is that correct?
Uh, that would not be correct. It was six, zero, one. We had one abstention.
Okay, okay.
Uh so
We did.
That would, that would need to be corrected. Um and that's a correction that I would add as at the end of a motion.
Okay.
On the property side improvements, um with the existing sidewalks, is the intention to replace the existing concrete? There, there's of course sections that are old and broken, uh but I wanted to um and then uh the second part of that question, adding the additional spots uh along Main Street. Um, I, I presume the intention is that you're closing off the, the road of the curb cut.
Right.
That is, that's her front there, so um I, I'm just not sure, you know, so if you can just speak to the concrete replacement that uh sidewalk, you know, aspect of it.
There's a series of damaged uh slabs throughout, so it's more valuable and conducive to replacing all of it and bringing everything back up to curb height as there's been a series of areas where there's dipping and on level grounds, which could possibly cause tripping hazards. But at the very front of the property, there was an existing apron uh that gave a like access to uh the front door area where there was a emergency fire escape from the second floor, which is going to be removed. Um so that curbing is going to be removed and raised up to proper heights, which is presently painted yellow. All that yellow marking will be removed. Um, the front of the, maybe about ten feet from the flagpole, there is a handicap ADA accessible parking space uh that will remain. Um but there is a no parking from here to corner sign right at that spot, which will then be relocated within twenty feet of the Hall Street entrance. We're gaining about forty-five feet of curbing, which I believe zoning is seven by twenty-two. Uh so we'll be able to add two full spaces there. There are eighteen units, which are single bedrooms, and there's fifteen uh private parking spaces. Correct. Yep. So those will not be primarily for use of anybody at this property. It'll be for anybody with a zone eight parking pass or up to two hours in parking, I believe.
I have a question about the rendering. So you said tho- those windows are what they're, you're going with or you're, you said they're going to be?
So that, that is the correct rendering.
That's the correct rendering. And is the roof going to be green and the gla- and the doors, are those green? Is that what the intention is?
So only that awning over the six entrances to the apartments for the existing gymnasium. Um, that roof line is going to be a tin aluminum material that is of a, a green color, uh which we submitted to Harb. Um but the black framing is going to be replacing all the windows that are existing on the front structure. And then all the windows that are on that left side where that green awning is, all those windows are going to be installed with matching headers. Going to have a slight bump out to match the front facade of the former armory. Uh but that awning is going to have that green textured tin roof.
Um, Mike, the um, the, the two um ADA um units, do they, this was discussed and I can't remember and somebody else asked me about it, do they have um uh in-unit um washer-dryers?
Correct.
They do, okay.
Yes, they'll have a, a, it's a single-function washer-dryer.
Okay.
So it's not a stackable unit. It's not two separate units. It'll be a single-functioning unit that acts as a washer and dryer. And they're located at the first floor of the, the main structure.
Mr. President. I, I have a question. Is there anything that can be done with the back entrance on Jackson Street? To make that smaller and add another on-street parking spot there?
So the existing apron, I believe, is main, being maintained. So I don't, we're not taking any parking spaces from Jackson Street.
Right, I know, but I'm, I'm asking if that, if that entrance could be made smaller to add a parking space onto Jackson Street.
The existing apron, I believe, is twenty feet. So existing borough code is twenty-two feet.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
On the Main Street facing section, the sort of historic church area, is there any rooftop access planned? Is it, or is that just flat-roofed and?
Uh, the front, like the
The flat area?
Yeah, that's just flat area.
Just roof.
Just roofing. But then the main roof will be a shingle roof as it is now. Um, the front structure has an EPM rubber membrane, which will be um repaired in certain areas, but it's not fully being replaced.
And no pilot house, nothing up top, no, no roof access.
Just some venting, ventilation for the bathrooms and dryer vent.
If it was in another part of town, it could be a cool rooftop, but uh
Um, Mike, one other question, drawing on our uh memory of the um conditional use hearing. You did present to us, uh and it's not formally part of the conditional use or of this, uh you did present that you, your, your plan was that this would be, and part of the reason you had the density in the building was that you were hoping to make it, you know, I mean, formal term, affordable housing, but I, I think you used the term workforce housing. Um is that still your plan? And can you give us any further detail now that we're, we're through this process? Uh with regard to how you hope to be able to accomplish that?
So the seven units that are in the second floor of the former gymnasium, they're all going to be very similar in size, which then we can save on materials. So they're not going to be having granite countertops or stainless steel appliances. Um, the focus is to make these units affordable for the general workforce of town for roughly fifteen of those units or seven plus eleven, sorry. Um, the seven units that are on the first floor of the gymnasium are going to be two-story. They have a much larger footprint, which, simple mathematics, they're going to be a little more costly in monthly rent versus the other remaining eleven units, but the goal is to make them as affordable as possible.
I, I will also add echoing, um Ms. Dugan, I, I do appreciate, I mean, you've got the property. Um, you could have done something else with it and could have built a new structure on it. Um, instead you preserved it and did adaptive reuse to it and that's valuable to us, I think, to the, to the borough in general, certainly to me.
Is your expectation that the parking will be first come, first served for tenants or are you assigning parking?
Uh likely going to be built into the leases of individuals are assigned a parking space. Um because we have two handicap u- uh units, those are going to be given immediately to the two handicap uh accessible apartments. Um, the remaining thirteen um will be basically on a first lease basis direction. Um, if any leases do not have a tenant that has a vehicle, that'll be much more valuable so that then we can remain having additional spaces for other individuals. We have reached out to the church across the street near the beer barn that in the event we need additional spaces, so that we don't have to turn away any possible tenants, we could then be subleasing spaces there as well.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, I'd open it up to the public in the room if there are any uh public comments on this application. Seeing none, uh is there anyone in the public on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? All right, seeing none on Zoom, I would entertain a motion on this application.
Microphone.
All right, um, like to make a motion to uh approve the preliminary make a motion to adopt a resolution officially approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan for the development known as one, two, three Main Street uh with the additional uh modification that the planning commission approval was in fact uh six, zero, with one abstention. That's my motion.
Second. Much by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Kirchner. Uh, Mr. Denlinger, does that suffice for the correction?
It does.
Thank you. Questions on the motion? Comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Next up tonight, we have our uh, the rest of our reports from committees, boards and commissions. We'll start with Mr. Kirchner for Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee.
We had a combined November, December meeting, so there was no meeting in December. And the next meeting is January thirty-one, Wednesday.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan, Rec Board?
Of course, I've got lots of fun things. Um, we've got the healthy seniors um improving strength, balance and flexibility. That's January sixteenth, one o'clock. Eight A R P Driver Safety Program. That is Wednesday and Thursday, January seventeenth and eighteenth from nine AM to one PM. Grandparents getting started by Safe Sitter. It's the latest information. And that's um uh sep- no, it's Saturday, February twenty-fourth at nine-thirty. Table tennis improvement classes, that's Mondays, uh January fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth. Youth pickleball clinic, that's uh two sessions. The session one is at a special discount, so check that out. That's January twelfth to February sixteenth. Session two is February twenty-third to March twenty-nine. Um, youth basketball academy on Mondays from January twenty-second to February twenty-sixth. Uh, badminton lessons, that's Saturdays, ten to twelve. Fundamentals of tennis is Wednesdays, January tenth to the thirty-first, and there's another one, February seventh to February twenty-fifth. For ages five to seven and eight to twelve, check the we- website to be specific, on specifics. The UC uh co-ed NFL Flag Football Training Academy, that one's at the Renaissance Academy on Saturdays from February twenty-fourth to March thirtieth for grades first, one to eight. Uh Circuit City Class with Core on Thursdays, January eleventh to February twenty-ninth from six to six forty-five, and then Strength, Core and Flexibility on Mondays from January eighth to February twenty-sixth from six to six forty-five. Keegong Fridays, ten AM to eleven AM. Pickleball clinics, Thursdays, January twenty-fifth to February twenty-ninth for whether you're a novice in our media, check that on the website too. And finally, the pickleball clinic for beginners, that's January sixteenth to the February thirteenth. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dugan. Mr. Carbonito with Tree Advisory Commission.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it last night and Ms. Berkeley graciously held on to the role for one more month.
Okay, Ms. Berkeley, Tree Advisory Commission.
Yeah, not many updates from Tree Advisory. Um, planning went well in the fall, looking forward to spring planning. Um, lots of conversations about sidewalks and trees. So I do imagine the committee may come to policy with some ideas and proposals. I encourage them to reach out to some local organizations. Um, it's going to bounce right back to HRC for me, so I might as well just keep the torch going. That's okay with you, Mr. Ewald. Um, HRC, no action to report that we HRC, no action to report that we haven't already taken action on with the two appointments earlier today. We do have one more opening in HRC. Ooh. That's a sign someone out there really needs to fill that that vacancy. And I do anticipate, as I previewed with Mr. Crack yesterday, some things from that commission bubbling up to policy to look at the ordinance. I have a few questions for our solicitor from the commission that I'm going to be covering with him at some point. So I see in the new year lots of discussion in that realm as well. And then we go into, I'm just going to keep, I'm just going to keep going. Yeah. Personnel and public safety, which is also me. Again, no action to report. We did have a meeting last night. Lots of good year-end reports from Tower Health. And we are, we do have an active list going for civil service, so we are starting the process of hiring additional officers.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, Parkson Red.
Nothing to report. We did not have a December meeting. Our next meeting is the in the January meeting is next Tuesday at six PM. Tuesday the sixteenth, and we'll have some interesting topics to discuss.
Mr. Carmine O, policy.
No action to report, but looking forward to our first meeting of the year on January twenty-third at seven PM.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, I T T S.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, we had no December meeting. Lots going on. If anybody would care to join us, our next meeting will be one week from tonight on the sixteenth at seven PM.
Ms. Dugan with Finance.
Also canceled because of the holidays.
Thank you. That concludes the reports from boards and committees. We have our second and final round of public participation. Any members joining us tonight in council chambers, if you'd like to make any public comment, please make your way to the podium and sign the ledger as well as state your name and whether you're a borough resident or not. Or if any members of the public are joining us via Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand digitally, we will select you and allow you to make make public comment as well. Quite a line forming. Okay. Okay, with that, we will close the second and final round of public participation. As is customary, any secondary communications from council or council participation, seeing none. Staff reports are in your packets for all of our department heads. One final announcement, council met in executive session on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, discuss personnel, real estate and litigation. We do have a need for a brief executive session tonight that will not be requiring.
They okay?
Are you all right? Okay. Sorry. We will be adjourning into executive session. We will not be voting on any matters tonight. So with that, what is council's pleasure?
I make a motion to adjourn into executive session for purposes of personnel, real estate and litigation.
Second.
Much by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We will see you next month and all of our committee agendas and schedules are on the website. So thank you very much. Good night.